Go to order. I would like to request of Senator Yamashita if he can lead us in prayer.
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the singing of the Guam Hemen Chamor, Senator Limtiaco. And for the national anthem, Senator Frank Hagen Jr.
(Music) Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us?
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the singing of the Guam Hemen Chamor, Senator Limtiaco. And for the national anthem, Senator Frank Hagen Jr.
(Music) Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us?
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the singing of the Guam Hemen Chamor, Senator Limtiaco. And for the national anthem, Senator Frank Hagen Jr. (Music) Thank you. And for the singing of the Guam Hemen Chamor, Senator Limtiaco. And for the national anthem, Senator Frank Hagen Jr. (Music) Thank you. And for the singing of the Guam Hemen Chamor, Senator Limtiaco. And for the national anthem, Senator Frank Hagen Jr. (Music) Thank you. And for the singing of the Guam Hemen Chamor, Senator Limtiaco. And for the national anthem, Senator Frank Hagen Jr. (Music) Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us? Thank you. And for the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Morrison, can you lead us?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And good morning. I move that we excuse Senator Rodriguez from session.
On a motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, on the approval of the legislative journal, I move that we approve the legislative journal May 28, 2013 through May 28, 2013, as well as the session journal for May 30, 2013, all subject to correction.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended as session journal.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imagallahu in Guahan, and I also move that they be appended as session journal.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that they be appended as session journal.
So ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees, and so on item 12, introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that bill numbers 128-32COR to through 144-32COR all be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
I move that resolution number 161-32COR through resolution numbers 169-32COR also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
And I move that certificate number 29-32LS through 35-32LS all be given its first reading.
Objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I move that certificate numbers 36-32COR through certificate numbers 45-32COR also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion is any resolution or certificate of congratulatory or commensitoratory in nature, rather, that's introduced for the duration of this session be adopted, that all senators be cosponsors, and that clerk and the legal counsel work closely with the sponsors of these documents in its preparation so they can be processed appropriately and accordingly. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered. Legislative concurrences?
Yeah, there are no override attempts, just...
One, two, three, and five.
Madam Speaker, there are no other motions. I'd like to go to legislative concurrence. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, from the Committee on General Government to Operations and Cultural Affairs, on the matter of Joseph S. Westley to serve as a member of the Guam parole board for a term of four years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to the following position per the governor's letter beginning on May 23, 2013, with Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz's committee's recommendation to do confirm, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
Objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, from the same committee, on the nomination of John T. Palomo to serve in the same board for a four-year term at the same time as the one prior, with the Vice Speaker's recommendation to do confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
Okay, and then for items...
Three. Three is in.
Items three, four, and five, Madam Speaker, I'll hold out until we receive...
No, three and five are in.
Okay. So have them receive a committee report for item three from your committee on education, public library, and women's affairs on the nomination of Maria Flor Herrera to serve as a member of the UOG Board of Regents for a term of six years as defined...
No, that's for the remaining unexpired term.
Doesn't say that. Doesn't say that here, so...
Yeah, so we're gonna have to correct that, though.
Okay, so for the unexpired term of... Who is the individual she's...
John Arroyo.
Okay, for the unexpired term for John Arroyo, and that with your committee's recommendations to do confirm, I move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And so we'll let the record reflect that she's filling the unexpired term of Mr. John Arroyo.
Number five.
And number five, Madam Speaker, from Senator Rodriguez's Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens, on the nomination of Henry J. Titino to serve as administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority, this one is at the pleasure of the governor as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to the following to that position as per the governor's letter beginning on May 24, 2013, with Senator Rodriguez's committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are no further legislative concurrences at this time.
Thank you very much, Senator. So on the second reading file, I would like to recognize Senator Respechio in Bill Number 48-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number 48-32, as substituted by the author, be placed in the third reading file with some discussion.
Yes, you may proceed, Senator.
Madam Speaker, I'm very honored, actually, to be a sponsor of this legislation together with Senator Tom Ada and Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and it's an act to define the educational and professional requirements for licensed professionals counselors, licensed mental health counselors, and marriage and family therapists. And this bill was originally introduced as bill numbers 48-32, 49-32, and 50-32. All of these bills went through a roundtable hearing as well as a formal public hearing, and at that public hearing and roundtable, we had the pleasure of hearing from the president of the Association of the Individual Marriage and Family Therapists, Rosemarie V. Camacho, a program manager at Healing Hearts Crisis Center, Maria Teresa... Maresa Ugin, Wayne Butler, from the Association of the Individual Marriage and Family Therapists, and also Ms. Nadine Sepeda from the Guam Department of Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. And I need to stress, Madam Speaker and colleagues, that this effort has really been a culmination of 10 years, and as they put it, of blood, sweat, and tears, to try to get their work recognized by national organizations and to move in this direction to provide for some statutory standards in the professions that regulate themselves. And so this bill is driven by this association. They've come forward to the legislature, and I've been involved in this personally for the last two years. And the biggest snag, Madam Speaker, is you have some IMFTs and some of these individuals who want to have their license reflect the national standard. Then you have those who want the status quo. They don't necessarily feel the need to have their licenses reflect the national standards. And so what I suggested to them at the time was that they provide a grandfather clause. And so you leave those who want to remain the same, and then you have an opportunity for those who want to have their licenses reflect those national standards. And then a third category, you can have a hybrid of both. And this is what this bill does. It's a very lengthy bill, Madam Speaker, it's 37 pages, but I assure you that every single word has been reviewed not only by this organization, not only by my office, but also by the Committee on Health, in which I'm very grateful to the chairman's support in the direction of having a roundtable, getting all their concerns, initial concerns, and then they came back to us a month and a half later at a public hearing, and there was unanimous consent for this piece of legislation. And at the roundtable, they've also... Senator Yamashita raised a very important point about cultural competencies. You know, they can go off island and get all the education based on those national standards, but when they come to Guam and start practicing on Guam, they need to be sensitive with our culture and other cultures that are... that live here on Guam. And so they did do an amendment that would require for continuing education credit. So when they have to go through these continuing education credit-type programs, this is where they can learn these cultural competencies. I do have one amendment, Madam Speaker and colleagues, in the final look-through of this bill. If we don't do this amendment, essentially, we'll be adding three additional positions of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. And so my amendment, which I want to offer at this time, would provide a section 22 and 23. And in section 22, it will create an additional two positions with the Allied Board of Health Examiners, such positions relative to ensuring that licensed professional counselors, licensed mental health counselors, and marriage and family therapists have accrued the professional requirements, have acquired the professional requirements for said positions provisioned. And then the other important addition we have to make to this bill is the publication requirement of the compiler of law to compile, index, codify, and publish the changes to the allied health regulations relative to professional requirements for licensed professional counselors, licensed mental health counselors, and marriage and family therapists under the provisions of this act. So I... If I may be permitted to move this amendment at this time, copies have been made and passed out.
On the amendment? No objections to the amendment? So ordered.
And my final amendment is to have Senator Yamashita as the fourth sponsor of this bill.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
And so thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues, and thank you again for allowing me to present these bills, which would refine and update the current allied health regulations in incorporating qualifications and exceptions to licensure scope of practice, client confidentiality, and continuing educational requirements. And these bills recognize that any alterations to the current statutory and regulatory structure governing the practice of professional therapists must be inclusive of all the stakeholders, including the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, local professional therapists and counselors, public and private mental health providers, our elected leadership, and the general public. And so I look forward to our colleagues supporting this bill, and I look forward to these professional individuals, given the wherewithal, to move forward in their individual capacity so that they can have a credential that's reflective of our national standards. And I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to present this bill.
On the main motion, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on Bill Number 48-32. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this measure. I certainly appreciate the work that has gone into this. I appreciate the 10 years of time and attention. I appreciate the leadership in the hall in the previous terms, and the openness of which the professionals were welcomed to the table over and over and over again. I am very... I was very pleased when the diversity issues were raised, whether those were social, culture, or ability issues. And some might think that because these are counselors that they would automatically be aware of and know what diversity is like. But truthfully, unless you really hone into our cultural diversity and our social diversity, and most certainly unless you walk in the shoes of ability diversity, you don't really know what that's like. And so as we raised and talked about diversity and advocacy and diversity in coursework, it was a very good interaction. And as the mover of this measure said, they went back and they did some more conversation. And while I don't necessarily agree with grandfathering, I respect. I respect and I acknowledge that we get what we can get, and we move forward. I also appreciate the fact that they are focused on continuing education, where just by listening to these circles, all these different groups, my sense is that they will encourage each other to know the competencies that are needed to respectfully and to correctly address all of the people with diverse issues. And so I'm very pleased to support this measure. I'm very thankful that performance and accountability is being addressed in all types of circles across our island community that will ensure that our people are safe as they try to get better, as they seek help, and as they move forward in their profession. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the main motion, for anyone who would like to speak. Okay. Senator Respechio would like to close or send it down? So on the motion then to send Bill 48-32 through the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We're gonna take a brief recess.
I move that Bill 86-32COR, the version amended, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation be moved to the third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
Second session, Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on Bill number eighty-six.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved that Bill eighty-six dash thirty-two COR, the version amended as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation, be moved to the third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what Bill eighty-six does is it actually provides language which the bank, the lending institution, is requiring in order to complete the loan transaction that the port is seeking. Very briefly, the Port Authority of Guam is seeking a ten million dollar loan and for the purpose, for basically a threefold purpose. Six million of that will be used for the construction work to be done on the waterfront, on its wharf, and that project has been called the service life extension to basically shore up the weaknesses in the waterfront. And then the balance of the ten million, the four million that's remaining, will be used to purchase some container lifting equipment and also to buy software to upgrade their financial management system. Now, the port actually embarked on the process of seeking this loan back, as far back as June twenty-eighth of two thousand twelve, and it went through GIDEA to issue an RFP, which GIDEA did in September of two thousand twelve, and it issued an RFP for a lending institution to loan ten million dollars to the Port Authority of Guam. The, an award was made in last year, and during, the institution that was selected to provide the loan was the Bank of Guam, but of course, one of the provisions that the lending institution wanted or was that a waiver of immunity be provided by law in order to provide the protection so that in case the port should default, that the bank would be able to, of course, recover its money and not be limited by the Government Claims Act. During the public hearing, of course, the concern was raised by one of the committee members, and the concern was that, that in the event that the port does default, that the lending institution cannot come and basically sue and basically ask for some of the assets, in particular, the real estate assets that the port has, to be able to be compensated for the loan that it has made. This then was taken back to the banking institution, and in the end, what, the final language that was forged was basically language which is shown on page two of the bill, starting at line twenty-one, which basically says that, "Should any suit or action arise or be initiated to enforce any of the terms of any agreement indenture or pledge of revenues concerning the indebtedness authorized under this article, any judgment therein shall be paid solely from the revenues of the authority, and at no time shall any other property be subject to foreclosure or recourse to satisfy any suit or action authorized by this article or judgment therein." So, the additional language then was coordinated between the port, the lending institution, and of course, the committee, the committee that had raised, which had raised its concerns about the possibility that the lending institution may want to sue and claim the port's assets other than, other than revenues. So, I think the concerns have been addressed to the satisfaction of all parties, and so Bill eighty-six then, I'm asking my colleagues to favorably consider Bill eighty-six so that the port can then initiate the actual execution of the loan and be able to begin the work that it needs on its waterfront. Coincidentally, we will be having an oversight hearing on the port, and one of the things, one of the subjects that we will be focusing on, of course, is the matter of the service life extension work that is to be done on the waterfront, because it's very important that we address the sustainability concerns of that waterfront to ensure that we are able to bring in goods into the island, of which the port handles about ninety percent of the commodities that we consume on islands. So, that, Madam Speaker, is Bill eighty-six, and I urge my colleagues to favorably consider the bill. Thank you.
On the motion, Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for recognizing me and allowing me to speak on this bill. Madam Speaker, I want to thank the good chairman for causing the Guam Economic Development Administration and legal counsel for the bank to draft this additional protection, because I was concerned about, or was my fear, that in the event of a default, and the general manager did acknowledge that if there was a default, that yes, the bank could foreclose, and the bank has graciously agreed that any default would not result in the sale of any real estate, and instead would only go against any revenue that would be generated by the port. So, I want to thank the committee, GIDEA and the bank, for having addressed my concern about this bill. But Madam Speaker, I am still concerned about the amount of money that the port is borrowing and the effect that that's going to have. Their twenty-year plan has their fees going up almost a hundred and forty percent with, they currently have, at the PUC, a petition to increase the fees by five point six, five point nine-five percent this year. They had an increase a few months ago to take care of the cranes. They're going to have this to have to address, and it is really going to get very, very expensive, Madam Speaker. And we were together when we met with GAO, and the one criticism that I had with GAO was the fact that the Department of Defense designated the Port Authority of Guam as a strategic port and, but provided no money out of Department of Transportation. It was only through the Office of Economic Adjustment that, and the Department of Defense, that the fifty million dollars was provided to MARAD. But I don't, I really don't understand how this service life extension could not and should not be the first thing that MARAD takes and does, and I acknowledge that I don't understand how it's operating, but it just concerns me that we had, we got a fifty million dollar grant from OVA, DOD, and the first thing we're doing is borrowing ten million dollars to take care of the wharf, which since the beginning, I have said should have been the first thing that should have been addressed, because if the wharf falls into the ocean, there'll be no strategic port. And the other one that I was suggesting was that they get cranes, and they borrowed for both, and it's just going to get so expensive for those of us in the community of having to pay for all these increases as a result of the continuing borrowing and the fact that the port is still probably the biggest political dumping ground for political appointees. And so, I'm not getting any comfort that they are taking care of their issues, and I'm not happy with the way that MARAD is treating the money that they received. So, I'm glad that they addressed this and at least that if they default, that it's not going to take any, force the sale of any real estate, but I'm still not happy with the way that the port's operating and whether or not they, we, they need to, and whether or not we need to continue authorizing them to borrow money, because when they borrow money, their fees go up, when their fees go up, our prices in the community go up, and it's already almost unbearable for anybody to live in this community. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, on the motion, are there any speakers? Speaker Pangvin, and you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise, of course, supporting the port's efforts to continue to move forward on its port modernization plan, but it's kind of disturbing to me that this requirement is happening after the fact. I mean, I understand the lenders, and I congratulate and certainly thank the lender who has been chosen on this, because they really have demonstrated a desire to work with this government, step forward when this government needs assistance in terms of financing its projects. But I'm just disturbed about at which point this requirement is being put in. Number one, because it's not part of the RFP. You know, if this requirement was part of the original RFP, then what would we be getting? Would we have the same interest rates? Would we have a lower interest rate? So, to me, it's almost like, you know, an end around, and I'm just concerned about that because of, I mean, every week we have protests, every single week, every, almost since this administration has come in, I don't know why, but I'm just speaking from my observation and what you see. Every single protest has been, I mean, just the amount of protests we have with, across the government of Guam, is just incredible. I've never seen this amount of dissatisfaction with how we're carrying out the laws of procurement. I mean, we've had protests in the past, but this one almost seems like every single one is being protested by every vendor out there because they feel they're not getting a fair shake. And maybe it's things like this where we kind of come back in after the fact, and what does this do to that? The other thing, of course, I always have a problem, is the autonomous agencies, when they come back and they, when we try to do something, when we try to work with them, when we try to get them to assist the government in general and the people that we serve in some method that we believe makes sense, that shows we're one government, and we always get this pushback. We always get, "Well, we can't do that. We can't give you any kind of payment from airport revenues because bond covenants and FAA requirements. We can't pay you anything for the use of easements or anything like that because of bond covenants and, and other factors involved." So, yet, we have given, I mean, when we made the Port Authority autonomous, what's the value of the infrastructure we gave them? Hundreds of millions of dollars. And when we say, "We need some assistance in the government of Guam to continue serving the people of Guam," can you contribute in some form or fashion? Can you contribute? And they always say, "No, we can't." Actually, and I must say, the port, I think, may have been the only one who ever had contributed, and I'm referring, of course, to the Autonomous Agency Infrastructure Act, in which they were actually able to do so, and that is because at that time, they had not entered into any financing that required a pledge on their revenues. But when we do this, I always feel that we're one government, and therefore, we should work together. Yet, when they come back and they ask us to do things, we do it, but when we ask them to do things, they can't, and we find ourselves in the same situation in the port. The port has now obligated itself to certain financing, which requires it to pledge its revenues, improvements which are good, but things like this, I mean, if you go to a bank and you say, "Can you guarantee my loan?" If you say, you go to a bank and the bank, and you want to buy a supply from off-island or something from off-island, the bank will give you a letter of credit, which is basically what we're giving the Port Authority. We're giving them a letter of credit. We're giving them a letter of guarantee that if the port doesn't perform and pay it, the bank, the government of Guam will step in and is supposed to be able to guarantee the payment. I'm not even sure, when I read this, whether that's really all it is, because the way that this looks like, it's, they're going to go after port revenues, but then if they're only going to go after port revenue, then what's the use of waiving sovereign immunity? What's the need to waive sovereign immunity if the guarantee is still with the port? And maybe, I'm not reading far enough, and maybe it's just to allow them to sue the port, but waiver of sovereign immunity doesn't ordinarily mean that. It means that you're allowing the protection of the government to be stripped away so that if the entity that has that obligation doesn't perform, then the entire government of Guam can be sued. And I'll have to kind of read that a little bit more carefully and see if I understand what we're doing here is correct. But going back to what I mentioned, when you, bank gives a letter of guarantee, bank gives a letter of, a letter of credit, there's usually a fee charged to that. And why is it that if these entities can't contribute anything, yet we're contributing to them by putting the full faith and credit of the government behind them and waiving on government sovereign immunity, the protection that they're afforded, you know, typically, if they want to be like a business, then we should treat them like a business, and we should charge, what the banks would charge them for a ten million dollar letter of guarantee, and let's use that money to do something that we need to do with the general fund that does, that we don't have the resources for, and whether that be for the hospital as a subsidy, or police cars, or whatever needs that this government has in order to service the people a bit more efficiently and, you know, and provide the resources for the departments and agencies. I just think that these department, these autonomous agencies always say, "We got to work like a business and so forth," but when it comes to the government of Guam, "Just give us everything for free, don't treat us like a business, but when we try to deal with you, we can't work with you, we have to operate like a business, and therefore, we're precluded from ever assisting you in any form, fashion." With the exception of the airport, I mean, they're paying for staff at the governor's office, so they're able to do that kind of stuff, but, but we can't do it for the people of Guam, you know? We can't have them help and contribute for the people of Guam. And I think that it's a one-sided relationship, and this kind of situation that we find ourselves just tips it further in terms of that one-sided relationship. So, I do have concern, once again, I have concern that this is something that we're stepping forward on after the fact, after the RFP, and hopefully, it doesn't lead to a protest. Hopefully, it doesn't lead to saying, "Wait a minute, had I," you know, another proposer would have said, "Had I known that this loan would have had the full faith and credit of the government of Guam and a waiver of the government of Guam sovereign immunity, I might have given you a lower interest rate, or I might have given you better terms." We'll never know, because we're doing it after the fact and doing it only with one vendor, providing that knowledge to one vendor. And, and again, you know, I'm just concerned about how we're moving and what we're doing with regards to these kind of issues on our procurement contracts and so forth, and I just wanted to voice those concerns and continue to try to figure out a way how to avoid these kind of things. So, Madam Speaker, once again, like I said, while I do support the port and its efforts to modernize its facilities, I just get concerned that we're kind of further pushing them away from having any ability at all to work with them, yet we're giving up things that are of an asset and a value to the people of Guam that we're just giving away for them for nothing. And I don't know that that is the relationship we want to continue to work with and perpetuate with regards to the government and its instrumentalities. Thank you, Nsudus Massey.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Sir Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I echo some of the concerns that were raised by the previous speaker. When I first looked at this bill, I was a little surprised that it's actually gotten to this point without a protest being filed. I was, and I'm concerned that us moving in this direction might open the door for that, because typically, these kind of things would be known in advance by those who are bidding. They would know whether there was or was not sovereign immunity, and in so knowing, that's how they would price their offerings. The waiver of sovereign immunity, as the retiring speaker mentioned, is going to allow for the entire government to backstop this borrowing. And if I were a lender, and I knew that the entire government was going to be backstopping the loan that I'm making just to the port, that would change entirely the terms and conditions that I would put forward on the table, because now it's no longer just the port that's going to have to make good on the loan, but it's the entire government in the event that the port is unable to. So, that's a real game changer, and I'm surprised that we are at this point. I do appreciate the work of the author to move it forward. He's always very diligent in trying to make sure that the He's always very diligent in trying to make sure that the port is getting the resources it needs to improve. But I also rise, Madam Speaker, uh, in concern of the whole nature of the undertaking altogether. Uh, here we are entertaining a bill to facilitate borrowing, more government borrowing, even if it's by an autonomous agency, it's still more borrowing. We've been doing a lot of borrowing lately, Madam Speaker, so much so to the point where talking about borrowing $10 million is pretty commonplace. And, and I, I still step back and, and, and say, $10 million is a lot of money. And we're able to just go out and keep talking about borrowing, borrowing, borrowing. And what bothers me about any kind of legislation, especially today, Madam Speaker, that involves borrowing, is we're just, we, we, we're just coming off of a, a recent change in the winds here, where the government now is being, is being told, and the message that's coming down is that there's money. There's money to pay out increments, there's money to pay out merit bonuses, there's money to go around and make good and all these things that we need to pay to people. But then, in the other hand, we're saying that we don't have enough money to pay for these kind of improvements. We need to go out and we need to borrow the money. And that's where I have a problem, Madam Speaker. Do we have money or do we not? Is this a priority or is it not? And if it is and we do have money, then we should be spending the money on what we believe are the true and utmost priorities. If we don't have the money, and we do need to go out and borrow to make sure that we're able to capitalize these priorities, then why are we going out and spending money in other areas? The messaging needs to be consistent, Madam Speaker. We need to start managing the people's money consistently and rationally. And to say that we need to go out and borrow on one hand, while we're able to go out and spend on the other, is just grossly irresponsible when it comes to money management, in my perspective, Madam Speaker. The author of the bill brought up that this was in process, this whole effort was an undertaking starting in June 28 of 2012. And back then, the money situation was very different, the messaging was very different from the messaging we're dealing with today. The messaging back in June 28 of 2012 was that the government strapped for money. You know, and so maybe going out and borrowing so that we can amortize the cost of $10 million over an extended period of time would make sense then, because the improvements need an upfront infusion of capital, and we're going to amortize it over an extended period, because we don't have the money now. But, Madam Speaker, this is June 2013, and the message is completely changed. And the message is now this government has money. So, why are we going to borrow, put this off unto future generations, amortize an expense over an extended period of time when supposedly we have money today? When we have money, Madam Speaker, we need to prioritize it, and we need to be very careful about talking about borrowing, because putting things off to future generations when we have the money today is something that I'm very uncomfortable with. And I just want to be on the record in stating that. However, I do appreciate the intention of the author, and, um, as with the retiring speaker, I'm going to be weighing all of my concerns very carefully with regards to this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Buenos, Madam Speaker, and Sisus Massey. I just have a, a couple of questions. I, I was in attendance at the public hearing and understand to a great extent in terms of exactly what the request is being, that is being proffered here, and the amendment. And I commend the sponsor for incorporating the amendment and ensuring that no, none of the assets or property of the Port Authority is acquired as a result of this financial arrangement. But, Madam Speaker, I look at, at the overall process in regards to acquiring these resources, and it goes back to one of the statements provided by a previous speaker. And that is the Marriott loan in which approximately $50 million was extended. And I believe that during the course of the public hearing, that was a question that was posed. Why is it that some of those proceeds are not applied towards these basic requirements? And when I say basic requirements, it's the service life extension repairs, which include the port's WAF, which include the procurement of a financial management system, and also the addition of a container top lifter, all to be acquired as a result of the, the $10 million loan that is being proposed here. And you know, Madam Speaker, one of the other follow-on questions also during the course of that public hearing was, how is the port, or does the port presently have the capacity to meet the annualized debt service as a result of this impending obligation? And the response at that time was that the port was proceeding through the Public Utilities Commission, and obviously, we've heard previously that that particular process is ongoing. But it appears to some extent as placing the cart before the horse when it comes to this particular provision. I guess the question, and if the, the sponsor can eventually yield, would be, is the proposed increase, fee increase before the Public Utilities Commission going to be directly applicable to this $10 million loan, or would it incorporate other requirements by the Port Authority of Guam? You know, Madam Speaker, because this process has gone on and lingered for quite some time now, I am inclined to support it, but I need to ensure that in fact, our people understand why and where this process is, why this process is where it is today, and where it's going in terms of the resources that are going to be acquired to repay this debt service. We're talking about $10 million, and it's an operational expense, because obviously we're allowing them to go out and acquire $10 million for required maintenance and upgrade of existing basic facilities. So, Madam Speaker, if the good sponsor of this legislation will not mind, uh, yielding in terms of where the proposed fees for the Port Authority is in the process with the PUC, and whether those proceeds, whether it be a 5% adjustment in fees, whether those proceeds will be specifically and directly allocated towards addressing this loan obligation, or whether portions of it will be allocated towards this loan and other operational requirements within the Port Authority. So, Madam Speaker, please, if the, uh, good sponsor would mind responding to that inquiry.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Ah, yes, Madam Speaker, I will.
Thank you, Senator.
Uh, first of all, the, the Port Authority has already transmitted to the Public Utilities Commission for what is called the interim rate increase request, uh, for a, an increase of, of approximately 5, 5%. And within that, 5%, uh, about 2% of that is to generate revenues to be able to service this $10 million loan. The balance of that, uh, increase is really to pretty much, um, um, cover for the increased cost of operations through inflation, um, and, and just the general increase in the cost of operations. Now, um, I, I said that they transmitted an interim rate request, uh, petition. And the interim rate request is basically, uh, a request which says, "We know we need it." They, they give, um, they, they basically give a real general justification, uh, to give them time then. They know that they need the money, and then they'll come back in August. Uh, they'll be coming back in August when they would actually have more of the details, and then they can determine if in fact they, the 5% is on the high side, if it's on the low side, or if it is right on the mark. So, that's where they are at, at this point with respect to the rate increase.
Senator?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the, the sponsor providing that question. I think it, it begs, uh, at least from my perspective, it presents even more questions in terms of this timeline of coming back in August and seeing if in fact it's a top end or, or, uh, need, the rates need to be adjusted either up or down. And, you know, Madam Speaker, we understand the requirement for the $10 million, and being able to address some of the basic facility needs, as well as the financial capability of the Port Authority of Guam. But if in fact, an interim rate adjustment was presented to, or is before the PUC, and then they're coming back in August to ask the PUC to either solidify that particular rate adjustment, or to increase it, or to decrease it according to their requirements. Obviously, in most cases, we don't anticipate a decrease in their proposal. My question is, why is it referred to as an interim rate adjustment rather than just arbitrarily putting in a rate adjustment proposal that would be reflective of exactly what the anticipated revenues are going to be as a result of that rate increase? So that we in this body can be assured that that's the rate adjustment being presented before the PUC, and that 2%, like the good sponsor of this legislation highlighted, 2% will be allocated to taking care of the debt service for this $10 million loan, and then the remaining balance for operational requirements. And that's where I anticipate that the PUC will be able to ask, hopefully, the hard-line questions. What are your increased costs for operations? Rather than hiring, uh, perhaps, I guess, one of the previous speakers had alluded to the port being utilized for political hires, but rather than moving in that direction, trying to address some of the other operational, as well as facility requirements within the Port Authority. So, I, I thank the good sponsor for his response. I think he just threw in another, uh, I guess, another question on my part, as to why would we want the port? Right now, they're asking us to confirm and to support legislation that will provide them the opportunity to go out and acquire a $10 million loan for basic facility, port facility upgrades and requirements, but then still submit an interim rate adjustment rather than, than a full-fledged rate consideration on the part of PUC. And, and just close the door on that and allow us some sense of comfort in understanding exactly what the rates are going to be before the PUC, and how or what the impact would be on many of our people in terms of the shipment of goods coming in through the port. So, Madam Speaker, I, I certainly appreciate the response, and I appreciate the amendments that have been made with this particular legislation, and I look forward to any additional comments that will be provided on this proposal. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, Senator Duenish, you're recognized.
Buenos, Madam Speaker, and Sisus Massey. I rise, Madam Speaker, in support of Bill 86-32. And, um, notwithstanding the concerns that have been raised by other speakers, which are very valid, I'm simply going on the simple reading of the bill. And in my simple reading of the bill, it shows that the, the chronological history of this procurement. And it shows that GIDEA did their due diligence to move forward and execute what they needed to do by the issuance of RFP, through the proper procedures of vetting the RFP and the award. So, if I just go on the simple reading of the bill, Madam Speaker, then I go to what the bill proposes to do, and have, after having the board done its due diligence, and if I, once again, go on the simple reading of the bill, I go to the action that's being taken in this legislation. And it simply, in my simple reading of the bill, allows for the rate structure to compensate for what is required in the servicing of this loan, and takes away property, uh, the, the securing of property against this note. So, once again, Madam Speaker, I rise to, uh, commend the author on his consistent due diligence with regard to areas of his oversight. I know that he's done a, a very superb job, uh, with the port, not only now, but in, in, in years past. And so, Madam Speaker, uh, as I listen, unless there's any changes, uh, I will, I will continue to support this, what I see as a simple amendment, um, and not a, um, not a clause, in my opinion, to undo the due diligence that was done uh, prior to. And, and that, Madam Speaker, is in my simple reading, once again, of the legislation, the historical background, and the proposal to allow the port to move forward in the utilization of this funds, uh, for our very vital lifeline, uh, the Port Authority. And I'm not going to question the board's review in terms of, uh, what other, uh, things that they, they need to be doing with perhaps other monies. I'm going to, we have an oversight coming up, perhaps we can ask those questions. But for now, I believe this is, uh, a, a just piece of legislation to allow this $10 million to be, uh, moved forward to assist our port in their management and operations, uh, and, and to assist our people and to ensure that our lifeline is sustained. So, Madam Speaker, once again, I rise at this point in full support of Bill 86-32. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion? Senator Ada, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, I think a lot of very valid questions have been raised, and I would like to just, uh, briefly address, um, them to kind of help close the, close the gap on some of those questions that have been raised. Uh, the one question was raised was, why are we borrowing $10 million when we have a $50 million grant sitting in the bank? And this was a question that, of course, was asked by the port and by, uh, the committee, uh, back as early as January of 2012. Um, after a study was made, an engineering study was made on the soundness, the structural soundness of the waterfront, uh, the port determined that they needed to address that as immediately as they did any port modernization undertaking on the uplands part of the port. Unfortunately, the federal entity that has oversight of that $50 billion grant was the agency that was appointed by Congress, Marat. And Marat dug its heels in and said, "No, we're going to use that $50 million to do upland improvements, and we're not going to use that money on the waterfront." And if we do, they're going to have to go through this long, extended, 12-month study, or NEPA, and all that stuff. And the port and its owner, agent, engineer says, "Look, we don't have the luxury of time. We need to address the structural soundness concerns of that port." So, the port then made the decision to go out that, "Marat, if you're not going to, uh, use any of that $50 million grant to help address the situation on the waterfront, then we're going to go it on our own, and we'll, we'll go out and borrow." And then they were able to, um, actually get the, um, categorical exemption, because this is not going to be a new project, it's just going to be, uh, actually a, a work, a maintenance work of an existing structure. So, that, that really kind of answers, um, uh, the reason why we weren't able to get any of that $50 million. In fact, if we recall, it was around February that a delegation, to include myself, the, uh, governor, the, uh, chairman of the board, we went to Washington DC to meet with Marat to ask that very question. "We need that money for the waterfront." And the legislature passed a resolution wanting a balanced approach to the modernization of the port to fix the waterfront, as well as make up land improvements. A similar resolution came from the governor's office. A resolution came from the congressional delegation's office. And so, um, you know, this has been, this was visited back in the early, uh, months of, uh, 2012. The, uh, on the issue of, um, the port was designated as a, uh, strategic, uh, military strategic port. And, um, and I, I must say that the federal government has in fact been, I know, aside from that $50 million grant from the Department of Defense, uh, the federal government has been making contributions to the improvement of the port. It has been putting in, it's going to put in about $3 million to replace the fuel lines down at the port. It has put in, uh, well over $10 million to upgrade Route 11. Uh, so, it has, and then it has, the port has been getting a lot of, uh, uh, grants from the Department of Homeland Security. Um, the waiver, this, this bill which, uh, which allows the port to waive its sovereign immunity, my understanding of it is that it is not a different way of saying that if the port defaults, that then the full faith and credit of the government of Guam will, will basically, uh, provide the security, uh, for any potential loss to the lending institution. My understanding is that simply, that this waiver of immunity is to enable the lending institution to go in and file for a lawsuit to recover, uh, its loss and not be limited by the limits imposed by the Gov Guam, um, Claims Act. Um, now, um, you know, the, the legal counsel from the port, the legal counsel, the lending institution... Now, you know, the legal counsel from the port, the legal counsel, the lending institution, and I presume that GIDEA, who was the coordinating entity between these two bodies, had their legal counsel and also had a chance to look at this. So I'm not, I certainly am not of the understanding that we're basically, that Guaf Guam from the general fund is providing any kind of guarantee because it is not. Now, the issue about the possibility of a protest, because here we are, coming back at the later stages after an award has been made, again, you know, a GIP, I guess that could happen. Whether it will, I don't know. Does the other, the other entity that submitted a bid, are they aware of this? Believe me, they are. And so I don't, you know, can a protest happen? Yeah, it probably can. Will it? I don't think it can, I don't think it will. So it's, that's the only way I can answer that question. The urgency of the borrowing, should we wait until after the PUC has had a chance to review the interim rate petition, which we anticipate to be around August? Should we wait until then? Well, the fact is, is that we've been waiting. The port has been waiting, waiting, and waiting. Although it initiated the process as far back as June of 2012, admittedly, it had to pull back because of the changes in the pace of the buildup. And so they didn't want to go out there and overcommit themselves. But now they are at a point where we don't want to be a penny wise and pound foolish. We've got to make sure that that, the operations of that port is sustainable and we've got to get that work done as soon as we can. On the question about the rate increase, why are we, why are they just coming in for an interim rate increase as opposed to the standard multi-year rate projection, rate petition? And the answer to that is because there has been a lot of work going on in the background. The port's owner, agent, engineers has been, in fact, making its studies. So they have a pretty good idea of what kind of rate increases are needed, given different rates, given different scenarios. If the military buildup doesn't happen, if a reduced buildup happens or if a full-blown buildup happens. So right now, they're going on the premise that it's really going to be a pretty much a rate increase that they're going to have to ask for based on just an organic growth to meet the organic growth requirements. And the other reason why, of course, what's going on is the fact that there are, there's other studies going on because the port is finding out that there's other rate potential prospects that it has not been charging in the past. So for example, you know, it charges, for example, the transshipment of containers. Right now, it only charges $125 per container when it takes it off the big ship that comes into Guam. And then when it takes that container and lifts it back up onto a smaller ship for distribution amongst the region, it doesn't charge for that. And so in essence, the people of Guam is having to pay for that cost of that operation. Why should we? I think that the people of Guam should not have to subsidize that. They're also finding out that the transshipment of fuel going out, you know, it's 45 cents per barrel coming in and then for the fuel that gets transshipped out to the region, going back through the same pipeline, through the same pump, is only being charged at half of the rate, is only being charged at around 22 cents per barrel. Again, the people of Guam are subsidizing for that transshipment and it shouldn't. And so studies are being made to first of all, find out why is that the case? Because the Committee on Maritime Transportation has asked that question before and when it did, the answer it got was, that's the way we've always done it. Well, that answer is not good enough. And it may be that those rate, those revenue potentials that are being missed may be such that then it really needs to be addressed and as a result, it may result in a rate increase that is not as high as was originally thought. So I just want to say that there's a lot of work that's going on down at the port and it just takes time for these things to be completed. But in the interim, right now, we know that if we were to go out there and get a loan, they do not have adequate revenue to service that debt immediately. And so as a result, they just got to go in there and say, you know, this rate, this interim rate increase will be for one year and then by then, a lot of the number crunching would have been completed and they'll be able to then come in with really the details that the PUC's consultant will then take a look at and validate as to whether in fact the rate request is valid or not. So, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the attention that my colleagues have given to this discussion. I appreciate the questions that have been raised and all I, I just want to assure the, my colleagues that this bill would help us to get, start to get moving forward so that we can begin work on that waterfront. Thank you very much. I move that, I'd like to move that Bill 86-32 COR be moved down to the voting file. Thank you.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 89-32, Senator Snickles, you're recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to place Bill number 89 on the third reading file and to make that a bill available for discussion.
May proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I begin discussing Bill 89, I would like to proffer a handful of amendments that I can be talking about it in the proper context. The first amendment I would like to proffer is a simple one in the title, to change the name from Responsible Reserve Fund to the Responsible Receivables Fund and to have the clerk and legal counsel make all necessary adjustments to the language of the bill throughout.
On the amendment, on the title is to delete reserve and replace with receivables?
Receivables, correct.
No objections, so ordered. Clerks, okay. Senator, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have additional amendments, three additional amendments that I've circulated to the body and I believe the clerk should have a copy.
I don't, I don't have a copy. One second.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. All of these amendments are intended to require that the receivables are, that are less than, that are a year or less in age be excluded from the intentions of the bill. And so the first amendment is to line seven to nine, page one, and to have that line seven to nine, page one, read, unless the tour in Guam further finds that revenues from, and then strike prior fiscal years. So it will read revenues from accounts receivable and interest and penalties from collection items of the Department of Revenue Taxation and then add the line older than one year are unallocated cash resources. That is the first amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on page one, line seven, the first one will be to delete, seven and eight, to delete the words prior year, prior fiscal years. And then on line nine, add the words older than one year. Any objections? Objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The second amendment is on page two, lines five through nine. To amend it as indicated by striking the words including prior fiscal years and adding the words older than one year as indicated in the document of the clerk.
On the amendment to, on page two, to delete on line six, including prior fiscal years, and then on line eight, after taxation, add the words older than one year. Any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And the final amendment prior to my discussion of the bill is on page three, lines 10 to To strike again the terms prior fiscal years in subsection A and to add the line that says older than 12 months in section A and then to add the same line to section B.
Okay, so on page three, line 10, add, delete the word prior fiscal years and add the words older than 12 months. That's the first. Any objections? No objections, so ordered. And the second will be on B to add the words older than 12 months. Any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. You may continue again.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 89 was introduced as a result of the multiple oversight hearings that we've already had of the Department of Revenue Taxation, particularly on the subject of collections. Now, our collection situation is pretty dire, Madam Speaker. As of our most recent oversight hearing, according to the report from the Department of Revenue Taxation, we have $196 million of the people's money that is still outstanding and uncollected. Now, all the amendments that are recently proffered are going to exclude the first, the most recent year's worth of accruals. So that would take out, based on the numbers that we have here from Revantax, that will take out $80 million. And so what we have, that's older, all accounts receivables that are older than one year that this bill now applies to after the amendments, amounts to $115 million of the people's money. Now, the reason why, Madam Speaker, I introduced the amendments to exclude the most recent fiscal year is because in the over, in the public hearing that we had on the bill, the concern that was raised by the Department of Administration was that the most recent fiscal year receivables are still used to reconcile the most recent fiscal year payables. And so we didn't want to allow this bill to get in the way of the Department of Administration needing to reconcile the most recent fiscal year. However, everything that's older than a year old, Madam Speaker, is not needed to reconcile the most recent fiscal year. What happens with that money, Madam Speaker, this $115 million that's older than one year old, that's due to our people and that's uncollected as of today, or at least as of the report from the Department of Revenue Tax. What happens is that that money comes into this government and it goes into the general fund and it gets mixed in with all the money that we're supposed to be bringing in throughout the current fiscal year. Now, what that means, Madam Speaker, is that our budget is based on our projections. It's based on what we expect to bring in. But when we start mixing in money that's more than a year old into the general fund, we're creating a new cash resource that wasn't part of the projection. And we run the risk of bringing in that old money to subsidize our current budget, even if our current budget is off. And so this bill, Madam Speaker, intends to create a separate fund for all of that money that is outstanding and uncollected, all of the people's money that is older than a year old, to the tune of $115 million. And so if Department of Revenue Tax does its job and it brings in all of that uncollected money, we're going to have $115 million go into this special fund for us to appropriate. Bill 89 also specifies what we're going to be focusing those appropriations on. On page three, starting on line 15, it earmarks, or at least prioritizes, the expenditures on stuff that we're supposed to be able to have money for that are one-time expense items that we typically don't budget for. So the first item that we'd be able to use money from this special fund for is for court-ordered amounts owed by the government of Guam. So for example, the Ledzon case where we owed $29 million for the Ledzon landfill owners or the court-ordered payment to the teachers who were furloughed that we still have not paid out. That can come from this fund, as per the language in this bill. The second item, Madam Speaker, is for prior fiscal years contractual obligations outstanding and payable. Now, to translate what that means, that means, for example, our vendors at GMH. $20 million worth of vendor payments to GMH can be made whole by whatever is accumulated and put into this fund. We need to be making good on our contractual obligations to our vendors. There are so many consequences that our people suffer from when we don't. One, we lose vendors, so we have less people being able to provide quotes and less competitive bids and higher prices. Two, when we're not paying our vendors on time, they begin instituting risk-based pricing. And what that means is that they begin marking up their goods anticipating that they're not going to get paid because they don't believe that they're going to get paid on time. And so by having this money go to outstanding contractual obligations, we're going to make sure that we're, they're getting paid and that they're not having this money, I'm sorry, they're not having this obligation to sitting out there on their books and they're jacking up their prices to our people, to our government because they're trying to make up for what it is that we're not paying for. We need to pay our vendors. The third item, Madam Speaker, is for prior fiscal years accrued and unpaid wages due to government of Guam employees. Now, translating that, Madam Speaker, that is speaking particularly to our law enforcement personnel who have had a pay adjustment that's probably about two years old at this point they have not gotten paid on. Whenever our people, our hard-working government employees have wages that are due to them, we need to make good on those. Those wages are accruing and so it's going to be one big lump sum back pay that we're going to have to pay out. It can come out of this fund so we can make whole finally to all of our law enforcement personnel who deserve it. And so that's primarily what that translates to. But in the event this were to happen at any other time in the future, Madam Speaker, we would be able to use the funds for that purpose. Nobody should have to wait for pay that they are rightfully entitled to. Item four, Madam Speaker, is for prior fiscal year merit bonus pay accrued and unpaid. This is a sticky issue. We've already started paying merit bonuses, whether or not we were supposed to have been paying it to begin with, the executive branch was supposed to have been paying it, but it's been paid. And now we have an equal protection issue and we need to go out there and make sure everybody who's due is paid and made whole. And so because that's an unbudgeted item and we don't have the money in the current budget to pay for that, nor do we anticipate budgeting for accumulated merit bonuses going forward into our future fiscal years, these collections, these receivables that get put into this special fund can be used to make whole those people who are due what is rightfully theirs in the name of consistency. Item number five is for the procurement of medical supplies for the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. This is above and beyond making good on our vendors, Madam Speaker, but in the event that we do make good on our vendors, the 20 million and there is, there are additional medical supplies the hospital needs to buy, it can come out of this fund. We should not be holding the hospital up because there's no money. If there's money coming on the collection side, money that hasn't been budgeted, money that hasn't been anticipated and now it's being accumulated into the Responsible Receivables Fund that this bill is intended to create, we can then take that money out of that fund and use it for supplies for our hospital. Item number six is education expenses to comply with the Adequate Education Act. Again, Madam Speaker, the legislature years ago passed the Adequate Education Act in order to set a minimum standard for our kids and their learning environments. This will allow for those monies to be accumulated into that fund and spent to meet that minimum basic requirement. Item number seven, Madam Speaker, is for capital improvement projects with an estimated useful life of five or more years for agencies dealing with education, health, public safety, or services for individuals with disabilities. What this basically means, Madam Speaker, is in the event that we are able to make good on all of those outstanding items and we still have money left over in our collections, we want to make sure that we're spending it on things that are going to last. We don't want to go out there and just spend the money on something that's going to be used and expended for in just the last year or in 12 months or in two years. We want it to go to something that's going to last at least five years. That way, we're investing the people's money, these unanticipated cash resources, into something that's going to last and benefit our people long-term, particularly in areas that we all share as priorities, education, health, public safety, and services for individuals with disabilities. Item number eight, Madam Speaker, is also in line with the capital improvement projects, but this is for the procurement of durable goods, a different kind of expense. but this is for the procurement of durable goods, a different kind of expense item, with an estimated useful life of five or more years. Durable goods, Madam Speaker, are police cars, ambulances, fire trucks, buses for individuals with disabilities. Those are durable goods. They're not like capital improvement projects that are buildings and the like. These are for actual use assets that'll be beneficial to those individuals who need the help in those services, particularly for education, health, public safety, and those with disabilities. And lastly, Madam Speaker, and perhaps very dear to me, is for the advanced prepayment of existing debt obligations of the government of Guam. Madam Speaker, we have an $8 million balloon payment for our hospital due in 2015. Our debt service is going to be going up by $15 million in 2015. We can see these obligations coming. And while the spending practices of today don't quite reflect the obligations that are sure to come in the years ahead, at the very least, we can be setting aside our collections into a special fund to go to the retirement of these obligations, so that our people are not blindsided by them two years later, or two years from now, and having to deal with it in their budget for their current operations, rather than us using old money to pay off these outstanding and sure-to-come obligations. So that is the intent, Madam Speaker, of Bill 89. I don't think there are many, many reasons why we would want to avoid making sure that we're accounting for this money, because right now, Madam Speaker, this, this collection's history, this $196 million that's outstanding, there's no way to account for it separately. It just comes into the general fund, and it just gets mixed in with all the current money coming in from our projected budget. And so we don't know whether or not it's a prior-year revenue stream or not. And that's kind of inconsistent with the way we account for our money, Madam Speaker, because we don't mix prior-year obligations of current-year obligations. We separate prior-year obligations and current-year obligations. Because we use current money to pay for current-year obligations, we should be using prior-year money to pay for prior-year obligations. But unfortunately, what we do, because it's convenient and because it's nice to have cash all mixed together, is we mix prior-year money and current-year money into one big general fund budget. So this will, will make that practice consistent with how we handle our obligations: separate it from current year and prior year, separate our money from current year and prior year, and have it all go into the responsible receivables fund, where we can make sure that it's going to priorities that we, as a body, all share. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tom Etta, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, I rise in support of the bill. However, if the author would yield, I would like to ask for a clarification on page three, the new section 21704. If you could maybe clarify the, that language there about expenditures from the responsible reserve fund may be authorized by the legislative appropriation only when an equal or greater amount of money is held on the fund. So let's say, then, that somebody identifies that we have these prior fiscal years contractual obligations outstanding and payable totaling in the amount of, let's say, $2 million. Does that mean, then, that we cannot go in there and appropriate from this fund until there is at least that amount equal? If you'll please clarify.
Do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, please.
Thank you for the question, Senator. The way, the way I interpret this is that, let's say there's a $2 million outstanding obligation to a vendor, but we only have $1 million in there. What I'm, what I envision is that we can only appropriate $1 million from that fund. We can't say, okay, we're going to appropriate $2 million, because there's $2 million more, there's another million in receivables we're anticipating, so we're going to go out and appropriate even though that $1 million isn't there. And so the way I interpret this language is that we only will be appropriating what it is that's actually in the, actually in the fund, regardless of what the actual obligation is. Mr. Speaker.
Is that answer sufficient? Senator Etta?
I, I understand the clarification that was just made. I'm not sure that the language, as is shown here, actually says what I, what the author has intended. So I would like to, I'll just take the time and then maybe come back at a later time and offer an amendment if we're still discussing the bill.
Are there any other senators which should be heard on the bill? Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Monsidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation, and I think it, it goes a long ways towards trying to ensure that we account for our money that is collected from the public to support government operations in a manner that allows us to actually implement what is the budget policy of the legislature that is passed and signed off by the administrations and governors, so that we can account for these monies, that we can, in fact, do a little bit more of planning, that we don't kind of grab money out of the air to fund things that we want to fund, that are, are out there, that may not be the most prudent thing to do. And I think that's very important, because have you seen what's happening now? We've gone from, you know, hear no money, see no money, have no money, to let's pay everything and everyone without even knowing where the money's going to come from. When you see the announcements of where all of this money that we're going to be doling out over the next several months, we really don't know where they're coming from. We just say, well, there's an appropriation. In most, in some instances, there's even no appropriation, but let's go ahead and pay it. So we're really not accounting for it. And what this does is it restricts money that gets collected and paid that are basically two years or older, so not the cur, not the existing year, and not last year's, but, but receivables of the government of Guam that it collects, and we kind of widow away at our obligations that we know we have and have been adjudicated, or we make investments in capital, equipment, and property to ensure that the departments and agencies have the resources and the equipment to continue serving the general public. So it's very important. We already account for, and are supposed to account for, revenues that were not identified in the current year's budget and are collected, and what we can do with those revenues. And we have that mechanism now under the, what you call the SAR account, Supplemental Accounts Fund, that says, for example, like the SCHEEDD funds. Those funds are going to SCHEED during this fiscal year, but they were not reported and not accounted for in the budget revenue projections, and therefore, those monies should go into the SAR fund and then appropriate it to pay for other obligations of the government of Guam that are not part of the budget. And so we now have a companion fund to the SAR fund for those accounts receivables and what is payable under those accounts receivable. So I believe that this is, in fact, you know, no pun intended, a responsible thing to do in order to ensure that we do follow the budget plan and the financial plan of the government of Guam. And again, you know, what I, what I want to stress is that the budget and the financial plan that the legislature puts forth needs to be followed, and it really should be, but it's not the legislature's will. It is the government of Guam's will, because that budget can never be implemented if the governor doesn't sign it, or if the expenditure's not approved by the governor. Because the governor, through his authority vested in him by the Organic Act of Guam, can line-item veto and say, I don't want to spend that money, so I'm going to reduce this in the line-item budget, or I'm going to increase this. Actually, he can only reduce, my mistake. He can't increase the appropriation, but he can reduce it. So if he thinks that it's not prudent financially to dedicate a resource to, to an obligation, he can reduce that. So there really is no reason why we shouldn't be working together on this, because it takes the administration to pass a budget into law by signing it, and of course, it takes this body to pass a bill, a budget bill into law by passing it and presenting it to the administration for his concurrence. And so what this does, Mr. Speaker, is it does put this whole issue of how do we use revenues that we accounted for and didn't collect, and in theory, then, and really, it should be in practice as well, what those revenues were supposed to fund should never have been funded in the first place, because you don't, you know, you don't have the ability to fund it because the revenues were not collected. If we were to discipline ourselves, then we wouldn't be deficit spending. But what we see that is occurring now, I think, with the existence of the SAR fund and the existence of this fund, then we can put the money that, or what our obligations are, and which fund we're going to pay them out of, into perspective, into what would allow us to account for this money and not overspend by ensuring that we can only spend what's in the fund. So we can only spend what is collected and deposited in the fund. We can't spend beyond that. And it's the same, of course, with regards to the current fiscal year's budget, where you only have the appropriation authority and the ability to spend against that appropriation authority. And if you find additional revenues that you collect in the current fiscal year that was not accounted for in the general budget of the government of Guam on those revenue streams, revenue numbers that were adopted, then they get put into the SAR fund, and we can appropriate that for other obligations of this government. And it could be for other needs of the government, or pay prior-year obligations just as well, or help departments and agencies that may be suffering, or autonomous agencies that may be suffering, such as the hospital and such. So, Madam, I mean, Mr. Speaker, I do want to say, once again, that I support this legislation. I think it's a good companion piece to the SAR fund account, that once again allows us to track our revenues, identify what they are obligated to, make those payments, and begin to ensure that we are able to fund the things that we want to fund, and that we don't fund things that we can't fund because the revenues are not there, because the revenues should be put into these two funds, identified and spent only when they are recognized. So I thank the good senator from Talafofu or the Chalampago, now living in Dedidu, for this let, piece of legislation, and I hope my colleagues will support it just as well. Thank you, Monsidus Massey.
Mr. Majority Leader, then Senator Barnes, and then Senator Dan Meschita. Did you have a?
Yeah, I was wanting to finish that amendment. I, I.
Okay, I'll get back to you. All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly rise in support of Bill 89-32, and I would like to commend the sponsor of this legislation, who also happens to have oversight responsibilities over the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And the good senator's presentation of this bill, certainly, he reminds us that this is a, it's a result of all of his oversight hearings with the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and, and the goal to want to collect all of these past due payables or receivables to the government of Guam, and thinking, what could the administration do with this windfall that is supposedly going to collect, and how we can earmark those funds. I want to say that if we're basing our, our position on this bill, on the position of the Department of Administration's position, I think, Mr. Speaker, I don't think they're very clear with respect to what the author is trying to do. The bill is strictly focused on all collections by the Department of Revenue and Taxation of prior fiscal year's accounts receivable. If you read the DOA's testimony, she writes, as written, "The bill requires that all collections made by DRT's collection branch for accounts receivables, interests, and penalties will be deposited or transferred into the new fund." Now, that's not what is consistent with what I just read from what is contained in the bill. The Director of Administration also talks about, she says, Director Manglonia says, these alleged uncollections. Basically, if I can summarize, she, she says that they already are required to spend for any revenues collected above projected to do certain things as the Budget Act requires them to do. But again, this is not revenues that are collected above projected for the current fiscal year. What Bill, what Bill 89 is focusing strictly on is all collections by the Department of Revenue and Taxation of prior fiscal year's accounts receivable, and that's on page three, lines 10 through 11. And so how can the Department of Administration argue that this would be an accounting nightmare if certainly all they have to do is just separate and segregate those collections that are made from prior fiscal years? And I, I don't want, I don't want us to be confused by the Department of Administration's position. I want to say that after trying to clarify what this bill does versus what DOA believe it does, I hope we can make some efforts to, to clarify with DOA if, if their understanding of this bill was different from what the bill is actually going to do. And so I, notwithstanding the Department of Administration's position, which I think is not very focused on what this bill does, Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of the bill, and say that certainly we have to have a responsible reserve fund to capture those revenues that have been collected from prior fiscal years, and so that we can outline what those priorities for payments ought to be. And so I thank the good senators, Senators Nicholas, for this piece of legislation, and I hope that our colleagues will support it, so we can start to have greater transparency in how these funds are used and how they're being spent by this administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. I, Senator Etta had the amendment before I went to Senator Pangolinan, so Senator Etta, your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I indicated earlier that it appeared to me that the language on page three, line 15 through 17, did not quite say what the author had, at, at least what I read the author had intended. And so the amendment that I proffer, and I've checked with the author, and he has concurred with the proposed amendment, I would like to proffer as follows. Starting on line 15, it will read, "Expenditure from the responsible reserve fund may be authorized by legislative appropriation, period. Said appropriation shall not exceed the amount of money held in the fund." And then we delete then the, the words "only when an equal or greater" on line 16, so that then the new sentence is, "Said appropriation shall not exceed the amount of money held in the fund." So that, then, is consistent with how he, his explanation earlier, that, you know, if, if we find that there's an outstanding from previous years of $2 million, and there's only a million in the fund, we can only appropriate a million dollars, and we cannot then say, oh, and the next million dollars is coming in over the next, however, many years.
All right. On the amendment that said expenditure shall not exceed the amount in the fund, any senator wish to be heard on the amendment proposed by Senator Tom Etta? There being no objection. Thank you very much, Senator Etta, Senator Munya Barnes, and then Senator Dan Meschita.
Sizouz Massey, Mr. Speaker, Manana Sizouz, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this Bill 89-32. I, I do have a question on, on page five, Mr. Speaker. It shows, it talks about the Office of Public Accountability, and how they should, that office should be able to perform the annual audits, and it gives a timeline after every fiscal year that one shall, one, uh, report, a written report of compliance should be submitted by 75 days after the end of each fiscal year, and, and I'm just asking if we could go ahead and amend that, instead of the 75 days, then, to make it 90 days? So it gives them three months to look over the accounts, because they do the, all the agencies, anyway, that to give them that timeline. So my First Amendment would be to change it from 75 days. So my First Amendment would be to change it from 75 days to 90 days.
The amendment is on page five, going from 75 to 90. Any objection? Any senator wish to be heard? There being no objection? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I, I really don't have a problem or any concerns, even after looking at the report and seeing that there were some concerns from the Department of Administration and Rev and Tax into how this bill would be perceived from the funds coming into the general fund. If the speaker could yield, there was mention in reference to what is being collected in a, in a prior year or any fiscal year for the efficiency funds for, for tax returns, and, and if that would have any effect if this fund were created? Because if I'm not mistaken, there may have been, I think we have a reserve fund already for that, right? So would that tap in? Would that affect it?
The, do you yield, Senator Sniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't like to pretend that I'm an authority on areas where I'm not too familiar with. I would like to, if Speaker Pangolinan, who's chair of the Appropriations Committee, can so assist us in clarifying the inquiry from the senator.
We'll take short recess.
of Appropriations, the concern that, that I brought up in reference to the efficiency fund and, and the funds that are collected for prior-year obligations going into the tax return refund portion has already been addressed, so I'm okay with it. And I just want to thank them for, for answering that concern to me.
Thank you very much. Senator Dan Maschida, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have a question, and the question is this: I believe I understand the intent of this bill. Take the monies that, that are past due, and now we have it, and so now we want to put it in the fund, and we want to appropriate it accordingly. My question, Mr. Speaker, is this: we have three other bills, and I, and maybe it's a technical question, but we have three other bills that want to take monies that have been sitting there for a little bit, five years, I believe it is, and one, and the intent of bills 1, 2, 3, 127, and 100 is to reappropriate to particular projects or initiatives or funds. The question is, if Bill 89 passes, what happens to those bills?
Does the author yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, thank you, and I do appreciate the question from the good senator, because those are, those other bills are priority areas. This particular bill addresses specifically receivables that are, that are anticipated to be collected. Those additional bills that we're entertaining today have to do with SCHEDED money, a complete, a different category of money, and I believe they also have to do with funds that are still remaining in the Tours Attraction Fund, also a different category of money. This bill specifically speaks towards receivables that are collected by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Those receivables are typically not earmarked for any projects or for any expense items, because it's unknown as to when those receivables will actually be collected. And so this bill is intended to create that special fund, so that when, when that money is collected, it goes into that fund for appropriation. So this bill will not affect those other bills.
Does that clarify your concern? Anything further? Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? If not, I call on the author to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would just like to make an amendment to the bill to include, as cosponsors, individual, individual senators who have participated in the final version that we have here, I would like to include Speaker Ben Pangolinan, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Rory Rispicio, and Senator Alinea Maschida as cosponsors of this bill. Mr. Speaker.
There being no objection to that?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion to send the bill down, any objection? Hearing none. I'm not sure about the order at this point. Senator Limtiaco, is your bill, is your Ben Beppe's bill ready? Okay. Then Bill 92, Senator Limtiaco.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
No. Hold on a second. We'll take a short recess. to discuss his resolution. Oh, I guess that's not ready either. We will take a short break again. Is your... All right. We're going to, why don't we just break for lunch? There, we stand in recess until 2:00.